... board meeting, would you please rise for a pledge of pride. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of our country. We stand as one nation under God, in the name of the Lord. We're going to dispense with the regular order of business for this meeting. This meeting is called for one purpose, for one purpose only, for people to ask questions about our downtown revitalization and to get a better feeling about it. But before we do that, I want to call in Dave Champagne, the managing manager, or whatever it is, of Wyatt that's coming.
Major Director.
Thank you.
Well, George, thanks for having me here today. Melissa and George have been working with me now, at least this last summer, and trying to give some knowledge through the TCC committee and other avenues. And I'm really pleased to be here today, be part of this waterfront revitalization in downtown, and be able to present, George, we'll check the back price of $75,000. Wyatt has been such a strong player in Rouse's Point over the years, in Rouse's Point, George especially, has been really good through Rouse's Point and into Wyatt, and all supported John over the last couple of years, even after the closure announcement. It's been really positive, and I think it says a lot about George and his staff and Melissa and the people here, and it's gone a long ways to help the village and maintain relationships between the company and the village, so thanks for it.
Thank you, Dave. This is certainly a beautiful red lantern, Dave, for Rouse's Point. Actually, a blue one. Let's call it that. This will probably, this is so that our downtown pier that we put in, the waterfront revitalization, will be absolutely no cost to that fairytale. Thanks again, Dave, I certainly appreciate it. I got a pen, I wanted to add it to you. With that, the meeting is open to questions, and anybody on the downtown and Melissa is here to answer any of your questions, and there's another board member there, there's another one sitting there, and I'm going to sit back.
We're going to go first.
No, and if I have any questions, I'll answer. It's informal, take your best shot.
George, if you don't mind, I thought maybe I could give people just a quick run-through of what we've accomplished, and you know, so we can all be on the same page, and then take some questions from there, does that sound good?
That's fine.
If it's okay with everybody. I'd like to just echo George's thanks to Dave and to Wyatt. Very early on in the process, after Wyatt announced the closure, we were very fortunate, the mayor did establish a really good working relationship, supported by the board through that whole time period, and I had a chance to go down to Empire State Development and meet with the gentleman from Wyatt who were preparing their marketing package, and as we talked, I sent them copies of our downtown and waterfront plan, it was obvious that we were working in the same direction, because they appreciated all of the amenities, the beautiful environment, our work on the downtown waterfront, quality of life, and they felt that was really important in their ability to market the plan, because the skilled workers at Wyatt want to locate in a place where they know, they know salary is important, but so is life, and now, when people are choosing where they're going to work, they're choosing where they want to live, and they really gave me the sense early on that they appreciated what we were doing, and now to have this very visible, tangible, fashionable evidence of support tonight, we really do appreciate it, so thank you very much. I want to thank everybody sitting here, I don't have, I think there's one face out in this audience, people that have with such of our new friends in the press, and we're really glad to see you all here, people that have not spent literally hours and hours and hours in this room, working on this process. I see steering committee members, planning board, zoning board members, former village officials, residents who have been very, very faithful in attending all of these meetings, and so thank you for coming back and, you know, being willing to listen to a real quick overview and then to share your thoughts with us. I meant to have index cards with our phone numbers and a way for you just to leave written comments, if you prefer that, but kind of a crazy date for me, so I apologize, they don't have those, but you know where to find us, as the mayor said, the board members are out here, you know where to find us. So, let's, first of all, I want to tell you, this is being done courtesy of our brand-new projector, and please keep your fingers crossed, this is my first public PowerPoint ever. Hi. The projector was purchased with some grant funding for our marketing and promotion program we're going to be starting a little bit later in this year. Okay. Starting with the waterfront, just to, I can shut the lights off, so you'll be able to see this better. All right. I just wanted to show you what it used to be, the old state dock, and what we're looking at now, our new Montgomery Street Pier, which is almost completed, already reserved for two weddings this season, and happily now, as a result of Wyatt's donation, going to be completed with zero cash input, in terms of cash going to the contractors on the project. Don't want to say there's no cost, because obviously you pay my salary and the DPW salary and materials that are going to, electrical materials that are going to be used, but in terms of a cash outflow from the village, zero dollars for this project. Connecting the pier to the boat launch is the shoreline walkway, you can see what the shoreline used to look like before the DPW went in and cleaned it out last year. The walkway is started, it will be completed this summer, I believe the board's target date is to have everything done and a ribbon cutting before the 4th of July, so it'll be in good shape for people to watch the fireworks and enjoy the parade down Montgomery Street. And this is also, when I say zero cash cost, we kind of launched the walkway and pier project together, we were fortunate, we got two grants from the Department of State Division of Coastal Resources to do this project, a grant from Parks and Recreation, of federal money, and we used old bond act money that we had, Senator Little has been very generous, gave us a member item for benches and signage, all of which made it possible to do those things. The boat launch was completed in '06, and you can see the improvements that were done there, most notably, I think, for people to use it, it's paved, it's striped, so there's some more spots and it's a little bit more user-friendly. That ornamental street lighting that you see will extend all the way from, at some point, Montgomery Street and Route 2 Quarter up to Lake Street. This year, it'll be installed from the boat launch all the way up into the downtown. The lights are already here, they were all purchased with funds from the village's independent energy efficiency program, so not out of the general fund, no taxpayer dollars on that one. And, you know, it's, that's the big stuff, the little stuff, and I think, as a community member, just as exciting is the day in July, a couple of years ago, when 35 people turned out to pull tires and debris out of the lake. It was a great day, it was, I think the people that were there had a lot of fun, they sure did accomplish a lot, and I hope we'll be doing another one of these this season, maybe the water will actually be down a little bit this year. To let you know what's on the plan for the waterfront, I said you want those streetlights, we do have grant money to do improvements at Veterans Park and the Old Beach, where Gateway at Route 2 and Montgomery Street, and downtown lake access and dockage site. So those are all projects that have grant funding at this point, that are planned for either 2009, Veterans Park and the Old Beach, that's right, 2009 or 2010 for the downtown lake access and dockage. This year, we figured finishing up the pier and the walkway was enough to keep us busy for the year. The downtown, where I think people are telling me they're seeing a resurgence. I went back and looked at pictures we took in '04 when we filed our Main Street grant, and the number of buildings that were vacant at that time that now have businesses. Here's one, that's Cory's Pizzeria. We have what was a vacant storefront on the southern half of 9395 Lake, now Kathy's Second Hand Shop. Save a Lot had closed, now have Dollar General. Harrison's Pharmacy has been vacant for quite a while now, the Car Wash and Laundromat. And then our Main Street projects, and I separated these out because these are projects that the property owners have used our Main Street program grant money to fund the building improvement. Lakeside Coffee, and then Alan Kaufman's Building, which does a pretty spectacular before and after, now home to All Seasons Realty and what was vacant storage space, and of course Vicki's Heads Up is still next door. Just one of the new businesses that have opened in Rouse's Point, along with Clark Forrester Associates, which is a financial firm, Ed Cornerstone, First Family Dollar, Kitco, Stewart's, and last and certainly not least, AcroMax Pharmaceuticals. Here are a couple of Main Street projects that are in process, you may have noticed the facades were stripped off the middle two buildings, the green and then the little white single family next door, both of those are Main Street projects, and the facades will be completed this year. Also planned for this season is the old Eldridge Pharmacy Building. All of these properties are purchased by the same people, they're people from Rhode Island that really saw the potential in Rouse's Point and came looking for property, and they're going to put the storefront back in the old drugstore, which is pretty exciting news. We have parking lot signage that is on order, because one of the things we've heard comments on from people is that we have a, people don't even know we have a parking lot, so we want to sign that, the village has done a lot of improvements to that lot they purchased up on Washington Avenue, so we want to make sure that people know it's a public parking lot, and we're going to, so the parking lot sign will go up along with the two small signs on the left, will go up on Lake Street to direct the people into the lot. And of course, the small sign, sorry, that was just on the PDF, but that's the sign that's going to hang on the building at the pier. Another really exciting thing, because this is, you know, this is the theory behind all the public projects, you can't, the public sector can try to prime the pump and get things going, but you don't have revitalization unless you have private citizens choosing to open businesses and come and spend their money and invest in their property. I think really exciting things to see in the downtown and the waterfront have been private investment decisions, and you can see Ray's Appliance, the new awning that Vinnie put up at Kathy's Furniture, both examples of that. Montgomery Street, tremendous difference in these buildings, the Mosses completely redid their apartment building, they have another one next door that they're working on, that I'm sure is going to be gorgeous, and then Tony Madignone, who owned this building, decided to put a coat of paint on it, and what a difference. And I think that's directly attributable to the investment that people in this village are making. This is also really a great thing to see, when Dollar General came in, you know, we had a couple bumps in the road on the signage, had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Palmerow and his representative, the planning board heard the application, we took the opportunity to say, you know, one of the things in our downtown plan is to try to create more of an edge in that area, to separate pedestrians on Lake Street from the parking lot, do you think maybe you could do some kind of landscaping? About a year later, there was, and they, you know, chose to install this themselves, and I think it's very much appreciated by everybody at the village. So, that's just an overview of where we've come in our, what, now it's been about a year and a half since we passed the downtown waterfront plan. We, as I said, we have some projects going, we still have some Main Street money to spend, so we're looking for more property owners to get into the facade program, it's a tremendous deal, the state pays half the cost, the village reimburses for windows and doors, energy-efficient windows and doors, I know there's an application in the mail, I've been called by several other people, so we're really encouraging people, if they have an interest, now's the time, because there's probably about half the facade grant money left, and it will go with a couple of big buildings, it doesn't take too long to go. So that's something coming up. As I said, we have a marketing and promotion project we're going to start, we have the grant contract now, it is money for the village to redesign its website, put a business directory on the website, come up with a logo and a tagline and a, you know, a digital image to go with our image that we've come up with in our design guidelines and our public design, and so we're looking forward, we're definitely looking forward to working with the businesses on that. The other part of the money that Wyatt gave is going to cover the village's share in what's called our community redevelopment strategy. This is allowing us to take some grant money that we received from Wyatt's, announced it was going to close, to look at how we can diversify the village's economy, how we can promote tourism, but also look at other areas that might be logical for industrial development, and what needs to happen there to open those areas up. You know, I think we're all resolved to make sure Rouse's Point in the future is as strong going in, you know, to this challenging 21st century where economies change rapidly and we need to be prepared, and we have so many advantages between our location, the border, Wyatt and AcroMax in town, and really things we can offer, so we're going to be taking a look at other possibilities for development in the village. So at that, I'm going to be quiet, and, that's not bad, George.
Not at all.
Oh, too, too bad, and we'll answer any questions you might have, or listen to suggestions.
I'm just curious, I saw you had plans for the Old Beach. What are those plans, was the village able to finally get that property from the state?
We weren't able to get it, we got agreement from DEC to let us use it. We don't, and they wrote a nice letter of support for the grant, DEC sent us a letter. We're going to have to work out those details in terms of, okay, now that we have the grant, what do we do? Do we try to get it, do we get a 99-year lease on it? That's an issue that needs to be worked out as we go forward. So, what we're envisioning there is some, you know, a strip of parking, and then a picnic area, and hopefully a study of the water. The general consensus is probably not ever going to be a swimming area again because of the issues that were there, and the fact that, you know, there's even less water circulation than there was 20 years ago, when the water quality was an issue, but I think it's worth taking a look at, might be a good kayak launching spa, which is real popular, you know. So, that's something we have to work through, but they were very cooperative.
Surprising, the DEC actually, yeah.
I don't know, how'd they get it? Because it used to be the Bridge Commission, and they were going to give it to us, but then they transferred it to the state, and then I thought New York GSA got it.
It ended up in DEC.
And then GSA gave it to DEC probably, because it was a state agency.
Probably, who knows?
I think the quality of the wetlands on the other side of the bridge parcel, they wanted that, and I think they may have just ended up with the old Bridge Commission property. It's been interesting, just, you know, looking at the property on Montgomery Street, which is very old in a lot of cases, and New York kind of thinks they might own it, but they don't really have a huge interest in it, so we'll get to that.
Quite a bit of property, Tom, I go for that. That goes, John, that goes pretty up to you, doesn't it?
It was up to the driveway. Yeah, we were that close to getting it, in about '86 or so, and then we didn't get it.
Has there been anything about the property?
No news on that, no, haven't heard anything. But I do think that, you know, in terms of our revitalization strategy, that was an area that we seen as logical for future industrial development, and I think there are some old issues there, and one of the things we'll want to do, I think, with our, in our study, is figure out what needs to happen to, you know, develop that land, what are the obstacles and what needs to be done.
The other thing I wanted to ask you about, Melissa, it seems like in the summer there's a lot of Canadians come down here and ride bikes, that you start here from the right center, you know, and that looks like it's just really an up-and-coming thing, because people are really into exercise now.
Montgomery Street is going to be designated as the bike path, the bike city highways. We had talked to those people, I want to say about five years ago, when they started all this, that Lake Champ, named Janet Kennedy and all that group, and I was at a meeting at St. John's, and the bikers came to me about it, to people that ride bikes, and I said, well, we're planning this, would you consider it? They said, absolutely, they want to send that down that way, come down Lake Street and then turn down Montgomery, go out that way.
And, you know, I think that we had, last year, we had more than one group that parked through for the weekend, they want to be able to know they can park in the parking lot, and then they take off, and in fact, we were having a pier project meeting, and this gentleman came in and was looking for somebody, I think I introduced him to Mike, but that's when we start, when we market and promote. Rouse's Point is so special because we have shopping, we have restaurants, we, you know, have some lodging, and I'm sure we'll have more, and, you know, we are very fortunate, you just can't find that as you ride necessarily along Lake Champlain, so, and having this facility with all that parking, it's perfect.
On the water side of the sidewalk that's being developed through the new pier from the boat launch, on the water side of that, will there be any landscaping and reinforcement of the shoreline?
The plan for that is to reinforce where needed with additional lake stone and rip rap. And that was done partially as the DPW was working, and then I think they'll go back and give it a top coat and, you know, dress it as new. Past that point, I think that's really, there's been some discussion that, do you let it overgrow again with the kind of natural bramble that grew there, or do you keep, try to keep it, keep the vegetation down, I think that would be an issue for the village.
Get some decorative perennials in there.
Are they putting a railing down the sidewalk, or what, or nothing?
No railing.
Don't you think that's an issue, a safety issue? I mean, if wheelchairs, they take people out of the ARC here, and they go down by the lake and stuff with wheelchairs and stuff like that, they go off in there, they're going to, they're going to have a problem.
Well, I, you know, I think there's quite an area, I mean, it's not like you're right on the edge and are going to drop off.
Oh, yeah.
There's one area that we might.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty detectable, yeah.
I think it's something, Billy, that as we put it together, we'll be looking at it, it's a safety issue, we're talking about maybe putting some speed tables on Montgomery to slow traffic down. I got a call today, as a matter of fact, from somebody outside the village that works with speed tables, and said he wanted me to go look at the plans, see if they're rubber, they come with all the markings that you can put in temporarily, if that's what we've decided to do to slow the traffic for the pedestrians and the, you know, to keep, and maybe we might have to put some kind of, as it is, we move the lights from the, from going from the east side of the shoreline to the west side of the sidewalk, to be some type of barrier, and people line up with cars, you know, when they, when you see there's a light pole, you usually try to stay a couple feet away, so that might address it, if not, we might, if necessary, it's not that we haven't decided not to put a rail, but if we see it's a safety issue and it is a problem, I think we can address that, we'll probably pull one.
Or a little curving or something.
Yeah, something that would match what we have at the boat launch, that nice pressure period, if we need to, you know. We haven't figured all that stuff out, but we will.
Given that the new pavilion and pier does not go all the way out over the old state dock, and at high water time, that dock is not visible, is there any plan to put some kind of warning lights or something out there? Because now there's people unfamiliar with that little area, they may see that pier and say, oh, let's go in there with a boat.
Well, we brought that issue to the Coast Guard and the Corps of Engineers, both of them said, we don't have to end it. Now, this is not to say that we won't.
I don't think they're the final authority, and when you ask those people about the lights on the trestle, like Lighthouse Point Marina, where there's no navigation lights, functioning navigation lights on the old trestle anymore, I wouldn't rely on the Coast Guard for lighting.
They are the authority that we were told to go to. I haven't been checking with both of them. It can be an issue, you're absolutely right, I, you know, I know it's there, you know it's there, but John Q. coming in.
Somebody coming without a charter, I don't think.
Could end up without a bottom on his boat.
A few years ago, was that pier up higher above the water? Did it sink because of the way the bottom fell out of it?
Bottom didn't fall, never flew out, the cribbing is perfect underneath that. We have sent divers down, we got videos of it.
Really, all the way around?
The cribbing is perfect, right, all the way around. That dock is, as far as I can remember, I'm not going to tell my age, but it's old enough, has every year gone in the water, every year.
It was always water.
Back in '02 when they built it, I guess the engineers didn't use a transit rider or something, but.
Well, was that before they dammed up the risil? Maybe they changed the water level back?
That could be, who knows, just, I don't really know.
My suggestion is that the village consider putting some kind of warning light out there, or if not a light, at least a triangular warning of some sort.
Why, some markers or something out there.
Something out there.
If the village puts something there, then you open yourself up to a real liability, because if you don't notice it.
That was what the Coast Guard said.
Exactly.
Do you do anything to it, it then becomes your responsibility.
That pier is on the navigation charts, and anybody that's out there should know it is there. Same way this sportsman's pier doesn't have any light on it.
Be nice to take that pier out, it's very expensive, so.
Who does the maintenance on the gazebo? Village?
What was that question?
Because who does the maintenance on the gazebo?
We do, that belongs to us. That belongs to the village of Rouse's Point.
So then pine boards are on there, they shouldn't use the pine boards then.
Pine boards where?
On the gazebo, yeah.
I think that's cedar.
Those aren't pine, those are.
I think that's cedar.
Yeah, there's some of those special stuffs they got.
Well, if they want to take a look at that, there's some pine boards in there.
Is there?
Yeah.
There's some, make sure.
There's some big timbers in there, and they're all cedars.
Especially ordered, special good wood in there.
Better be.
Forty grand worth of wood.
Well, you take a look at it tomorrow.
Getting back to the state dock, the original plans to put that gazebo out at the end of the state dock? Because the way I look at it now, with that gazebo where it is, you got, you got a problem when the water is high, because you can't see it, and you got a problem when the water is low, because you can see it, and if you're sitting on that gazebo, it's not the most attractive thing to be looking at, you know, so I think there's a way to get rid of it, because, you know, I don't.
You're talking about not the gazebo, but you're talking about.
I'm talking about the state dock, yeah, yeah, if you're sitting on the gazebo looking out, you see the whole state dock.
High water at the gazebo, we're going to be.
No, no, what I said was the state dock, when the water is high, you can't see it, and when the water is low, you can see it, and that, to me, is a problem too, if you're trying to attract people and show how pretty your community is, that state dock isn't particularly pretty.
It's going to be an issue, Cal, it's going to be an issue. It definitely needs to be cleaned up in some way, even if it takes pulling weeds and brush down.
That's a really challenging thing, because it's not easy to get somebody to give you grant money to take that old dock out of the water, because when you're done, what did they give you money for? What do you see?
Nothing.
Nothing. Very hard funding, and surprisingly expensive. It was about, we took out about 30 feet, and it was about $30,000, so you're looking at, you know, about a thousand foot, and you have about 300 feet left to go, so, you know, it's a pricey, pricey thing, and I'm not even being permitted to do it from the core, so it'd be interesting to try to get, because it's a big operation.
I don't think it's 300 feet.
About the 470-foot pier.
Is it?
The pier is 100 feet from the shoreline.
I'm sorry, the old dock is 470 feet, so.
The pier that you see, the new pier, is 100 feet from the shoreline.
You start messing with all that too, you're going to change the flow of the water in front of your house, it could be all changed, you don't know if you took that out of there, you know?
Who knows, maybe we'll get some money someday and cover the whole thing.
It was an economic issue, that's why it was decided to only do what was done, obviously.
We're going to give them a check tonight, and if I could have added a few more zeros to it, we could have done something. We'll leave it as it is.
Is part of the Montgomery Street revitalization including a paving this year?
Certainly is, it's in the budget. It may get taken out, but it's in right now.
We were actually able, in our 2005 EPF money, to get $10,000 to help offset the cost of paving, which we knew we'd have to do after they did the underground electric project. electric project, you know, so.
We're also looking at curbing.
Do you plan on going down further like the Barkhams Marina?
With the, uh.
Revitalization?
Oh, absolutely. The, the, uh, two thousand and nine project, which includes the old beach and Veterans Park, includes extending the ornamental streetlights all the way down to Route Two. And in terms of the shoreline walkway, that's a question mark because that, that depends on feasibility. We will, we've promised to extend the walkway. Whether that needs new construction of a new sidewalk will depend on whether it's, it's feasible with the land that's available on the lake. It may be restoring the sidewalk on the west side in places where it needs it. It may be putting the sidewalk in where it's logical. Perhaps it makes sense to cross back over at some point if we can't extend it along the shoreline. Maybe it makes sense to cross back over as you get down, farther down on Montgomery Street. Past Barkhoms where there's a lot of land, maybe it makes sense to do that. That's something we'll have to investigate as we, we plan that project. And that will be done like the, I, you know, as I was speaking before, but I assume that will be done the same way the other projects were done where we'll have public meetings and put the designs out, take input and then get people's comments, uh, maybe.
Going in the other direction toward that two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten project of, of public access and of public docking. I guess it's between Kathy's Furniture and the, the building to the north of it. Have you got already the agreement of both property owners for that?
We do not.
Is that something that involves money to persuade their agreement or what?
It, it will involve a bunches. We have, the, the village picked up, I think they, one of the pieces of property through tax sale, through the county, uh, there's another piece and that one, you know, is, is not being negotiated, so I can't really say too, too much about that. But that would be the hope that that's where the link exists.
Pretty quiet, bro.
Melissa's a good job coming home late.
Just, I'm so glad the project worked and almost, I think one out of two times I've seen anybody try to do this, the technical difficulties and the difficulties and they thought they're never gonna also.
A special slide for that. Look at technical difficulties, it's not working.
That's not working, tap dance now, right?
I think maybe a point for the revitalization, you see the saying that the village would purchase the windows and the doors for the buildings that are revitalized. That's money that the village gets from the energy project, right?
Yes.
I think they need to.
Yep, that's a good point, Mary. That, like the streetlights, the ornamental streetlights that are used, that is money that comes out of the Independent Energy Efficiency Program, the I E P, where a fraction of every penny that goes into the electric fund is dedicated by, to the program. I guess it used to be optional, George, but it no longer is with New York's whole emphasis on being green and energy efficiency.
When Governor Pataki extended our hydro contract, I'd say three, four years ago to two thousand twenty-five, our contract was up in two thousand thirteen, he ascended it to two thousand twenty-five. And one of the conditions was that you would come up with energy efficiency programs. While the municipal electric started the I E P several years ago, went for about five, six, seven years or so, then died. Those that wanted to continue it forth and they didn't. And then when this came out, we all, we all got together. What's nice about this program is that we, the village of Ross's Point, has the destiny of the money. The state of New York is not dictated to us. And, uh, you've all heard of NYSERDA, that's the New York State Energy people. But I think Paul Tonko now heads that up for the state, uh, looked at this program and they said it was so good that they couldn't touch it.
Would you speak about the Route Two, George, with the I E P money?
Anything that's energy efficient, that will save energy, they'll help us with. They just spent, I wanna say sixteen thousand bucks on roof coating that is an insulator put on this roof right here. We've never been able to do it without that I E P money. And that will be done this summer. Well, streetlights, we bought streetlights, we bought windows for, we'll go in, we've given even wise money on that. We bought two energy efficient starters for the big chillers several years ago. We've given store owners who buy the balances and the bulbs for the, the new T eights with our energy efficient fluorescent lights, you must give us the old ballast. If you people haven't seen the brochures for appliances, it's a year to year thing, but I talked to the manager of, of our, of the I E P and I said, why don't we just make it continuous? There's rebates to customers in Ross's Point that go out and buy an energy efficient appliance, a washer, a dryer, a stove, a refrigerator, air conditioner, or even commercial people can get in now. Refrigerator rebate program's super. They give you seventy-five dollars on a back, on a refrigerator. Right? And if you give us the refrigerator, we'll give you another seventy-five. We wanna get them off and up and it's a thing to get, to make things green.
Just refrigerators or freezers?
Uh, good question, don't know, but I think it's just refrigerators. At Ross's Point, but it's a good question, Mary. We got a meeting coming up, we got a tele park conference coming up, uh, a couple of weeks. I'll bring that up, that's a good point.
Should be both.
Yeah.
I'm gonna raise. I know my son just built his new house there and he got quite a bit of money back from appliances and stuff.
We'll help you with insulation. Eventually, we've got the thermal imaging camera now. Eventually, once we get calmed down here a little bit on our electrical, we wanna do energy audits, we, in the wintertime, they go around, take thermal imaging of your house and tell you where you're losing heat.
Will you be able to put new windows and doors in the railroad station if we ever get a roof on it?
Yes, ma'am, it's already in the works. Windows, doors and insulation.
A roof would, could, could the roof be considered?
Roof first.
No. Can the roof be considered energy efficient?
We're working on that, we're working on that right now.
That's good news.
This I E P money has been, is, we have many, many reasons to be thankful around Ross's Point for municipal electric, most notably with the power electric bills. I still, having moved over from Champlain, it's been, it's been seven years now and I still smile every time I write my check. I don't care January or not, I'm happy to pay my bill.
Look at the S E N line.
What?
Look at the S E N line.
The, uh, but.
The nuclear line.
There's no nuclear, no more nuclear charge.
So, I'm not.
It's incremental power.
Same thing.
We're not, it's not.
And my daughter just came home, just give you a, she's living in Boston, she's not home during the week, she got her bill, thousand kilowatts that she used, one thousand. She paid a hundred ninety-four dollars for one thousand kilowatts. That's nineteen cents a kilowatt hour, right?
It's.
She wasn't even home for the five, she's traveled, she, you know, and she's, and she's home three days out of the week.
But in addition to the low electric rates, we've been able to use that I E P money as matching money for our grants and that's how, it's been a big part of the story of that zero cash contribution. Because that's on all these projects, I mean, there's, there's really, there's been nothing other than paying your employees and buying the supplies we need to work that the board has had to spend. And, for example, the, the old beach and Veterans Park, the lion's share of that match is running the streetlights down and the I E P will buy them. So it's, it's, it's been a really good for the village.
Uh, giving back to the revitalization downtown and you showed Moss's building, apartment building, I know we, we talked about this before and this is gonna be part of the new waterfront in the downtown. Is there any way that somehow, either through the I E P or something, that those people that are redoing those homes on Montgomery Street, you know, even if it goes all the way down to, like if we're gonna continue on through Route Two and the Lake Shore, to get, you know, if we wanna beautify the homes and this is, you know, a highly, gonna be a highly visible area in the future, somehow to get residents that are doing these things? I mean, I know Moss's don't put a lot of money there, that people wanna redo their places, you know?
If he would come, come to us for insulation. Anything that's secret here, it's energy efficient, they're not gonna buy paint.
No, but he's putting windows, he's redoing his apartments.
If he would come to us for that and then we can get on the horn, say, hey, this guy's doing his project, is there anything we can do for him? They will tell us, yes or no.
I can, I can think of three things, John, that, that might potentially answer your question. We can, now, I mean, we, we had some trouble with our Main Street grant. We got it in, we were in the first round, we were very fortunate, friends in the North Country applied for us, they stuck with us through some rip dry time. Their project's going, we've shown progress, the state's pleased, but we, we have it going, they gave us an extension. We could go for more Main Street funding and we could designate that portion of Montgomery that's in the downtown, you have to keep it as a tight downtown target, but you could go down Montgomery and upstate maybe, or, you know, as a possibility. So that's an option, but that wouldn't take you too far past that. I need to investigate again, when I first started in the job, we looked at community development block grant money. That's money that comes through the governor's office of small cities. Ross's Point's not eligible because our per capita income is too high. You look at Plattsburgh, Serenac Lake, the, you know, medium sized cities, they all, or small cities, they all get a chunk of change to basically spend as they need to for community development. We weren't eligible. So I need to check and make sure because that money can go to a facade program and it doesn't have to be, I think you could extend it maybe a little farther than the Main Street program. The third thing, and this is something that, you know, I'd like to investigate as we move forward, is, and, you know, it wouldn't be huge, but it is a tax break for property owners that move their properties in a direction that helps the revitalization effort. This is something I've been thinking about for a long time, about signage. You know, if property owners wanted to move their signs toward the design guidelines on the, on without anybody forcing them to, maybe over five years, they could deduct the cost of that out of their property taxes and end up, you know, paying less taxes and basically getting it done, doing it for free. That, that I believe can be done, it's not like a four sixty-five B, and that's probably not right, but it's, there's a way for municipalities to do that. Perhaps you could look at some sort of tax incentive to people that redid their buildings. You know, that, that's a possibility. Those are the things that kinda came to mind.
Oh, yeah, just I know in the beginning, you know, it was strictly just from Lake Street and the.
Yeah.
But things do change and then, you know, look at the stuff that these guys have done and, and we've done a great job and he's redoing the other building that he purchased and, you know, I just, but there's a lot of people take pride, the guy next door made the apartments, he's redone them all and they're all being rented.
Would you go back to the railroad again for a sec so the people know, I know it's not part of the downtown, but, but we're trying to move forward on that.
Jerry, do you wanna talk about that? Or not?
Or not? Well, um, like I don't think I can tell you anything that's done, that nobody already knows, that Benny Little gave us a member item of ten thousand dollars and we probably have another, maybe about thirty-five in the historical society that's earmarked for the railroad station. It was donated and it was raised specifically for that purpose. So we're about halfway to where we think, with what we need for the roof. And, um, I mean, we need to move on that. We need to work out what the next step is in order to get it done. I know we're talking about doing it, uh, this summer, this spring, late spring, you know, that kind of stuff. We need to get some, get it down solid, I guess, um, what the next steps are to make it happen.
The D and H has been a really heavy lift because of the fact that you had to start with the roof. And in order to do the roof, you had to do the substructure or it didn't make sense to put the roof on. And then we figured this out as we went along, we didn't, it's not like we knew this going in, I mean, believe me. And people sitting on this committee here, I mean, it's been a lot of time. Um, we went for grant money in '05 for historic preservation money, we didn't get the grant that would've, you know, allowed us to do this. We've submitted money for earmarks, federal money. They didn't pay off last year, earmarks are gonna live this year, it's, you know, they're tight, it's bad time to tighten up the fork, you know, just till we're in there trying to get some and they decided they were gonna tighten up the fork. But we're still in for that, looking for money from our senators and our congressmen. There is a grant, uh, that will be due at the end of July, it's called the Transportation Enhancement Program Grant. It's eighty percent federal funding with only a twenty percent local match. So I expect that the committee's gonna wanna go after that money. We can, we've linked up through Jerry's work with Lakes to Locks, we've made connections with them, that's the scenic byway organization, they'd love to have us as what they call a waypoint center, the area center.
Yes.
Where, you know, they have some exhibit space in the museum and, uh, that's what makes us, you know, really eligible, former transportation building, Lakes to Locks, scenic byway site. We might be well positioned for this one, but it's been hard because we figure about a hundred thousand to do what needs to be done, chimneys have to be no sense, doing the roof, till you get the chimneys, you know, done, all that substructure and then the roof. And we just, you know, they, the, the historical society's been fundraising for years and, I'd say we're about halfway there. Dave Tredo, our new I E P rec is coming to town on the twenty-first, is it, George? Twenty-first. To me, we're gonna at that point, shake a hat and see what we can get in terms of I E P money for, that would go toward the roof specifically. Because, you know, the windows and doors are great, but until you get the roof done.
Put a slate roof back on it?
If we got six hundred thousand, yeah, but I don't know, I think that's gonna be.
Is that registered as an historic building? Because I don't think the legislature put it.
Yes, they will.
Slate roof on a train station.
They will.
That's well.
Will they?
Well, we've already mentioned that.
Probably the only one in New York without the right roof on it.
Uh, they, they, I, you know, it's been, um, encouraging to me how much common sense we've gotten out of historic preservation. You know, they, I think they, they say we'd like to have slate, if you can do slate, that would be great. But if it's a matter of having, not fixing the roof or having, you know, doing what they recommended, those architectural shingles, they're really, you know, so they actually have some, the, the real heavy, um, structure that almost looks like slate, but I, I think it's gonna depend on where the funding comes, the, how much funds are available and what the bids come in, in and out to do the work. I think everybody would love to do slate. We even tried to, could we save it? I think we'd get somebody to haul it away and buy it from you. You would not believe, I don't, I mean, you would not believe what we've tried to do on that building and it's just one of those things that it's, it's just been a heavy lift. It's been a tough one. We don't have it enough cracked yet, but we're working on it. Nobody's giving up, right?
Right.
Right, at least it's winterized, it's, it's, and it's clean out. I mean, if you, are you gonna have another open house this year, Jerry?
Yep.
And just to be able to see it for what it was inside made us all feel, I mean, it's just, now you know what you're working for. Actually, the third one, just talking there once.
I think what we've found too with the railroad station is that when we, we make it visible to the public, like the open house, all of a sudden we get a little influx. We will, we'll get, we get a few checks in the mail. So we, what we're trying to do is, is make the building look like it's alive, you know, and the Christmas trees in there at, uh, when the, the Christmas tree came through. I mean, that, it makes people notice it. Maybe once we start doing our fundraising again, now that the cold months are kind of going by, we'll find somebody who will step up to help us because other organizations have done that and some that I've talked to. And once that some, an organization like, um, the plumbers or the electrical workers or a roofing company sees that something is happening and that it's a good thing, maybe they'll step up and say, well, we'll help you to do this for nothing. I mean, maybe not, but maybe they will too, because they do it for other communities. So we're keeping our distance.
On a related subject, I, I'm gonna be very negligent if I don't announce, I had an email from Jason Andrew who's in my mailing group, couldn't be here tonight, but wanted me to express to everyone that the vet is and the conservatory on schedule for the summer, three weeks, the answers will be in, there'll be art again and who knows, maybe they'll try to feature the station. That was a phenomenal thing last year. I mean, it really is.
Well, I believe, I believe its plans are to have a site specific performance at the new, uh, the new gazebo, the dock. And maybe we can get them to do it too.
Use your end of publicity.
Is that it, folks?
I just wanna say that I think that Melissa and the village are doing an excellent job. If the village, it looks good and, you know, we, we travel a lot and we go to a lot of places, we see some beautiful villages, but you know, Ross's Point is beautiful too and has such potential and it's coming. I mean, you can see it just in the pictures that you showed tonight. People are taking pride and they're doing good things and hopefully that's one thing that'll help to attract the new company to come in so that when they're out looking for and trying to solicit new employees and when the employees say, well, what goes on in the village and what's it look like, then it makes them want to come here, makes it a destiny. a destination, I guess. I think you're doing a really good job.
I'd just like to speak for a minute, let everybody know that the parade, the Fourth of July parade will be Sunday, July sixth. So four, five and six, for the people that wanna schedule a vacation or out-of-town guests, it'll be Sunday night at seven o'clock. Best parade ever, they're telling us. All right? I always say that every year.